To open the Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for November the eighth, two thousand twenty-two. The first item on our agenda this evening is to open the public hearing for J A R Associates. Project at one eighty-five Gressi Plain Street addition to an existing building. Do you want to read that?
To appear October twenty-eighth and November fourth, two thousand twenty-two public notice. The Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on a site and special permit by J R Associates LLC. For one eighty-five Gressi Plain Street for in addition to an existing building. The hearing will be held on November eighth, two thousand twenty-two at seven P M. In Congressroom D of the Municipal Center Wood School Street, Bethel, Connecticut. The application can be found on the town of Bethel's website. The public will send comments via regular mail and email to land use at BethelConnecticut.gov. Parking for hearing is located in the rear of the building, Ken Stevens chairman. Now we have from Beth C. Vagnan's Bethel Planning and Zoning official. J R Associates, one eighty-five Gressi Plain Street, special permit addition to the existing building. The applicant proposes to add approximately fifteen thousand square feet to an existing seventy-four thousand square foot building. Formerly known as the Burney Corporation. J R Associates has completely renovated the upgrade and upgraded the site to meet the town's present standards concerning landscaping, parking, and drainage. A special permit is needed because the expansion exceeds one thousand square feet. The following reports have been submitted. Public Utilities Director Thomas Vila dated eleven three, two thousand twenty-two. James De Mayo, P E dated ten twenty-four. Twenty twenty-two Thomas Galliford Fire Marshal dated eleven, seven, twenty-two.
Also, oh, I'm sorry to interrupt you for a moment. The Health Department gave us the report tonight and it is dated eleven, eight, twenty-two.
If the public and the commission do not have any questions, the public hearing may be closed this evening.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Peter Olson. I'm an attorney with an office here in Bethel at two seventy-five Greenwood Avenue. My firm name is Land Use and Conservation Council. I'm here tonight on behalf of J A R Associates LLC, which is the applicant and owner of the property. And is represented here tonight by Anthony M. Rizzo Jr. So you're right, AKA. We'll get to talking to you in a minute. We have to listen to me first for a little bit. As staff report noted, this is an application for site plan and special permit. Special permit requires a public hearing, which is why we're here tonight. And it is only required because the building is more than one thousand square feet. The proposed extension is more than one thousand square feet. The property is the former Burney Corporation manufacturing facility located at the corner of Francis J Clark Circle. And Grass Plains Street, and it's at the entrance to the industrial park. It is the key property as you come into the building. It's currently improved with a seventy-five thousand square foot, give or take, building that used to be the Burney facility. As staff report noted, we are proposing it in addition to the building of about fifteen thousand square feet connected to that building. When J A R bought this property in two thousand twenty, they cleaned it out. It was a fairly extensive clean out. It's been renovated. It's been divided into a few spaces and it's fully rented. So we think it's a very successful project so far. We'd like to keep that going. But I'd like to have Tony do first is show you some pictures of before and after, so you can see where we started and where we got to today. While he does that, I'm going to put up the plans on the screen to share.
Pretty ironic, actually, but for those of you who don't know me, I'm Tony Rizzo. I'm a Bethel resident. And my office is in Danbury. J A R is part of the Rizzo organization. So, and you know, when I was a kid, I lived on Reginald Road. We used to drive down with a snowmobile. Down to the golf course where Francis J Clark Park is. And the only building that was there was this building. Who would have ever thought that all these years later, I would say that I'm renovating that same building I used to drive around. But that's how things go. So what I thought I would do is just show you. You know, when we, when we bought the building, I have to say, when we purchased the building, we came to the town. And we did meet with the town to discuss some of the things that we wanted to do there. We had some tenants that we thought we could bring in quick. And the town of Bethel was extremely cooperative. So, and we tried to keep our word and do everything we said we were going to do with the building. The building is full. We've brought in some tenants from out of the area. Power two is a, is a new, new tenant that's there. Parts Cutter is a tenant that was previously at one of our other buildings in, in Danbury. We had a company called Medley coming in. They're not going to come in, but they've been replaced by a Canada El Generator is going to be taken to space. And then we have a company called Saint Thomas serve in the building. So we have a couple of the other people inquiring and that's why we started looking at to do an addition. But to give you an idea, for those of you and everybody here, I'm sure knows. This was the building when we purchased the building. At the time of purchase, it's twenty-one acres of land. The building is seventy-two thousand square feet with a basement of five thousand square feet. Anybody who was ever in this building would know and there's some photos of it. You know, it wasn't, wasn't that clean. It wasn't in the best of shape. So we did a full abatement. The place is, is clean. This is currently the after view of it. So the rear of the building here, which had some parking, some fence, this is where all the mechanical equipment was. Now it's, it's docks, it's parking. We basically tried to accomplish making the building that three of the four sides could be the front of the building. So that's what was, was done there. This is a similar photo to what the front of the building looked like before and after. So we cleaned off the roof. We painted the building. We changed the parking around here. And we're prepping this year where we're talking about the addition, which I will show you on another. We tried to give you an idea of some of the elevations. Anybody who knows in here, there was a silo inside that a hopper, it went all the way to the top of this. And all the way through the floor into the basement. That basement had, had conveyor systems in it. It was a, it was a pretty dirty job, but the dirtier, the more we fall in love with them. So here we are. But this is the same corner of the building. Except now it has loading docks on this corner, parking for the back of the building. And an oversized, very oversized dumpster pad. You know, a lot more than it should be, but that's what it is. So same thing, just to give you an idea. We took the same elevation. This is from Francis J Clark Circle. This is the new entrance that comes in off of Francis J Clark Circle. In the back of the building, which now is docked, driving door and an office entrance. So the side, the back of this building, which was this, now gives that appearance of a front of a building. We're an old school on you with these boards. This here is what the front of the building looked like from the parking lot. And what we did is we created handicap parking, changed that front of the building. Did a lot of landscaping, kept green in the front of the building. One of the first designs was a lot of paving. We, we have paving for what we need, but lots of it has still given a good curbside appeal. Because when you do pull up to the, the park, this building is the, the monument on the hill. So.
And windows.
And windows, and we, windows are all the way around for sure. That's the, the front, what it looked like before, after we cleared the trees though, because this was covered in trees. And this is what it is now. So. This just gives you an idea of anybody that can see this and anybody can look at these. But this is some of the before photos of what we got involved with in the building of what was there and how this building laid out. This is from up on one of the mezzanine, which we had to take out a lot of mezzanine that were in the building. That had all their, their cooling, heating equipment there. And then this is the inside of it today. So it's a, we had people who looked at this building when we first purchased it. And had no interest in renting it because they said it, it's not for us. Three of those people have come back to a sense, asking if there's any more space or anything we can do. Because they didn't think the building could look like this. But so we believe the good and that's where we are. So. I do have one other.
Can you pass that forward to the commissions?
Sure.
See that up close.
Do you want me to show that other one or do you want to wait?
Let's wait for a minute. I think I've already got it up here.
So that's it. Mine was short.
So we'll start with the plan that I put up here, which shows the existing building. And the proposed addition, sitting right next to the road between the existing building and the road. We'll have Dynus go through the site plan in a second and then get Tony back to talk about how the two buildings interact with each other. So.
Just for the record, Dynus, the biggest professional engineer. With our talent year group on behalf of the applicant. We are the site engineers to help see his vision through and. Glad to be part of the team and glad to present to you. This first sheet again gives you another bird's eye view of the, the building as it stood for many years. More recent overhead photos. The expanded parking and loading docks and such that Mr. Rizzo was describing. And our proposed addition will go right up here. So that would be located on the west side or the west face of the building. Just scoot right into the. Into the site plan. Now, as, as was described, the addition is about sixty and a half thousand square feet. Give or take.
There you go.
A portion of the about five, five hundred square feet in this connector corridor between the existing building and the proposed building. In keeping with the existing buildings, Mr. Rizzo asked that we add some parking to the front. Or, or act direct access from the main drive into the site. Proposed about a dozen parking spaces in front for potential two tenants using this space. On the south face of the building, we have a similar to the other units in the existing building. Loading dock and provisions for an overhead door as well. So you can have deliveries and pickups from either something lower grade or something where you can drive the vehicle right into the building. We kept this, this portion of the building in sight relatively clean, because that would be where the. I'd say the industrial portion of the business would take place where in the front you have the, the office and business uses. In keeping with what Mr. Rizzo has already done with the landscaping. Street trees proposed along the front of the road as is required. And we've got some flowering trees, decorative trees at the ends of the parking rows. And some shrubs, shrubs and bushes along the facade of the proposed building. The mass of the building. And the landscaping here that's proposed is again similar and in keeping with all the new landscaping that was placed on site. So we're again trying to. Keep the addition looking the same, landscaping looking the same, parking function all similar to what currently exists. Now, because we are going to be placing a structure and parking. On the property where it's currently grass, we are required to compensate for additional runoff with stormwater management systems. And we do have stormwater management system proposed primarily for roof drains along the eastern side of the building. And then there's a couple of additional little subsurface stormwater management systems proposed as well. We have received comments from the town engineer. He's just seeing, basically seeking clarification on the, on the calculations. With our stormwater management system, what we're proposing to do. Is to infiltrate up to the twenty-five year storm event. So. But we're fortunate here to have suitable soils for that type of system. And that's what we're proposing to do. And I think that the way that the printout is on the, the engineering report. Perhaps is a little bit of a misunderstanding on that end of how things are done. But. Comments and questions from the town engineer, no showstoppers. Basically asking that we check our eyes and dot our Ts or dot our Is and check our Ts. Yeah, I think about six comments. So nothing of consequence. Staff had mentioned that there are other comment letters in the file. We have yet to take a peek at those. But I suspect that's similar to the engineering comments, nothing really of consequence of the site.
Yes, that's correct, Dynus.
That's when Dynus says we, what he means is. I've looked at him and there's no issues. And I'll address the Health Department better in a moment.
Terrific. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you folks might have. Or we can go back to.
Thanks.
And then. Work it out.
Yep. Right. Laptop managed to shut it's on box. It just, I can remember what I was going to say. In terms of the engineer letter, there was a request that additional test bits be done to confirm the engineering work that Dynus and his team have done. And we have no problem with that. We just asked that that be a condition of approval. That we do those test bits and the engineer be satisfied before we push over. And that's something that discussion has done in the past, but I think works pretty well. We did also receive a report from the Health Department. And I just want to address that quickly. There are basically three comments. The first is environmental issues. She references an E L U R, which is an environmental land use restriction. We're nowhere near it. This is a survey of it. And if you can see the E L U R areas right here in comparison with the existing building. And that's for those building. So this was a remediation project that was done mostly by Burney. As part of our transaction, they're still in flux with the E P. But I just wanted to give you that explanation before saying that that's not something you should ever concern yourself with. You're not the D E P. They have their process. They'll do their process. They'll make sure things are done. It's not something that should come into your decision. She had a comment, I say she, I mean, our health director Laura Vucil. Had a comment about the size of the dumpster pad. We'll make a dumpster pad of whatever size is necessary and deal with that as part of the building process. Dynus, I think, pointed out the dumpster pad up here will make it whatever size. And as Mr. Rizzo pointed out, the existing dumpsters are vastly oversized on the property anyway. And there's one other comment. Oh. Question about the occupancy of the building. We don't have somebody signed up to be in this building yet. We are working on it. And when we do, we'll provide the Health Department with all information they need to deal with temperature control, which is what she's concerned about in her second comment.
geared towards office and warehousing type or is it geared toward manufacturing or both?
It's, it's to fall into the same setting that's there now, which is combination of office warehouse or a combination of office and, and light assembly. It's not really manufacturing.
Single story.
Yes. The height will match the existing building, which is about twenty-two feet.
So that's all we have to talk about the project they're presenting to you tonight. But we did want to give you some coming attractions. Because we think this property and this project has been very successful. We think this addition will continue to make it successful. And we would like to move towards adding some more space to this, which will require additional applications to you. But we just want to let you know what we're planning. So if nothing comes as a surprise, we're not piecing along with anything. We're just not ready to make that application yet.
This, this property?
Property, yes.
Twenty-one acres.
So it's a twenty-one acre site in the industrial part, basically. And so we put together this plan here. This is the existing building. This is the proposed addition right here. And then this whole section of the property is vacant and available for you. So we're working on plans for an additional seventy thousand feet of space. We're hopeful that, you know, one of our tenants here may want to step up at some point and take that space, but we don't have anybody in, in mind right now. The key though is kind of an if you build it, they will come scenario. If somebody comes to us today and says, I need seventy thousand feet. We say, okay, but we have to get approval from the town. We have to do site work here and there's kind of a lot of rock and trees here. So, you know, maybe twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. I wish by this now, okay, this is a little book on some of it. So what we want to do is put ourselves in a position where we have approvals in place for a building. That is ready to put a shovel in the ground as soon as we sign a lease. Maybe we need to come back for slight modification of it once you have the user in mind, but that's what we want to do. So there's a multi-step process here that involves clearing the trees and taking down some of the rock and getting this site ready. But, you know, previews, that's what we're hoping to get that into your. Yeah, coming attractions. We're hoping to get that application to you in December. But we'll, we'll, we'll see if we can hit that deadline. So. These pictures at the bottom are just of the existing building. Okay. Happy to answer any questions. See if any members of the public want to speak. Thank you.
At this time, we'll open the public hearing to the public. If you'd like to speak, please stand, state your name and your address and address your comments to the commission. When all questions have been articulated, then either the applicant or the commission will answer them for you. Anything in the room? Do we have any hands raised? David on the Zoom.
I'm not seeing any hands raised either on video or in the participants tab at this time, Ken.
Thank you, David. Commission, any questions for the applicant?
Miss Curious, what the remediation was? Tony.
The, the E L U R. When, when Burney, I still call him Burney, Burney Hubble, whatever we want to call him, when they manufactured. The electrical lugs that they ironically was electrical, which is what we started. That's what they manufactured there. They used almost a sand type of casting that went in this hopper that I described.
Right.
It came down and went through the system. As that was used to make the product, when they were done with it, they dug a hole in the back and that's where they would bury it. And that's, that's what it was. So the remediation that was done, it was dug down, it was capped. That was all done and that was all filed with the, with the E P. That never stops us down the road. You can pave over it. You can have brass over it. You can pour a concrete slab over it. However, if you're ever going to dig through it to, to put a building there someday or anything like that. We'd have to then go in, in fully remediate it by removing it in its entirety. So that, that's what it is. But that's what the product was.
I think, I think you've done a really nice job on the building. I like the building. It, it's a nice anchor when you pull in there. It looks good. And I think there's some other choices you could go in there and renovate too, if you wanted to make them all up. I, I do think the positioning of the dumpster pads a little unfortunate, sort of like street view dumpster. And even if you're putting that other building next to it, it's now it's, you know, building view dumpster. So. I don't know what you can do with it, what you have there, but it's just unfortunate in, in the way it lays out.
You're talking about the one in the very front or the proposed one?
Right here. Where's the existing one?
And this building's there. Here, well, here you got one, one, where's it?
It's over there.
One's over here.
Right.
And we put, we tried to shed it by putting some trees in front of it, which will grow. So there's one here. There's a, there's two on this side of the building. And then this proposed one is on the backside of this building. So there won't be another one in the front here, but it will be on the backside. It'll be screened with a fence, but that's about all we can really do with it.
You know, you, you would think we could put it in here, but we're trying to save this space for employee use. Pick the tables for lunch and as well, all of Tony's electrical stuff gets to go there too.
We have to leave that for access for the power company.
So we can't drive over it, but having picked the tables there, that, that works well.
Glad you're investing in Bethel. I appreciate.
Where I live now, right?
I think you've done a beautiful job and I know very much.
Thank you.
And keep in mind on the landscape plan, we've got street trees and bushes here. We struck that.
Ken, I have a comment.
Use myself in this application.
Ken.
Bob, did you have a question?
I have a comment though. I have a question, but I have a comment. I think it's heartwarming to see someone come in and invest in our town. Invest in a project that's going to make our town better. Without a pitched battle going on, work within the regulations and try and do the best job they can. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
All right, staff, any questions?
All I would like to say as far as the hearing, if you were considering closing the hearing tonight, you absolutely can. I reviewed the memos and had discussions with town inch, with the town engineer. And the other parties involved with this. And the hearing can be closed and these items can be taken care of at the time of issuance of a construction permit.
All right. We have a motion to close the hearing. Second.
Second.
Thank you very much.
We're going to take a timeout. Mr. Chairman, when you start the meeting, I can I make a suggestion after your seat, everybody? We have Lou Valenti here this evening. We'd like to have Lou. He's only going to take a few minutes of your time, Peter. And.
You have another public hearing, don't you?
It's not a public hearing. It's a presentation. Um, anyway, so if you don't mind, take care of your business. Stand up.
Right now?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Are there any additional copies of agendas and?
I don't have an agenda.
That's great.
It feels weird.
Thank you.
Hello.
How are you?
Still here.
That's good.
I'll give you this. I gave you all at the last meeting a letter with an attachment showing the area of Sunset Hill Road where the Bethel Wolf Trust had written. So Lou's here just to go over this a little bit with us.
Yes. Lou Valenti, Four Point Road, Bethel, President of the Bethel Land Trust. And we have a big ninety-plus acre piece of property called our Wolf Pit Reserve. Which is contiguous to the land that's seventeen in question that we are interested in acquiring. And, and the reason is we, the Miller sold their homes. And that provided us with access to Sunset Hill Road for years. The Miller family did give us land, but we lost the access to that part of our property. And it makes getting, we don't have a road, for example, to get through our, our property. It's a rocky hiking trail. And there's a, we have a lot of projects going on there. In fact, we got one right now that the Eagle Scout troop seventy-one is, is working on. But we also have a problem with the brook, in fact, right behind the Miller house. Where there's a sharp corner and some flooding and trees coming down. I don't know if you guys probably know about the ash trees and now we have the beech tree disease, where we have to remove a lot of trees. There's also a number of people who used to walk through the, through the Miller property to access our property as opposed to parking in our small parking lot. Or taking their life in their hands and trying to walk down Wolf Bits to get to our reserve. This is a little over three acres, Beth.
Yes.
And it would provide us with that access to Sunset. And, you know, we're, we're there to maintain it. We have several families in the area that actually are, are property stewards. The Waylands are there. And we have people who have their eyes on, on the property there literally on a weekly basis. You guys probably where we, we've taken over management of the Broad Preserve, which is definitely as well as over the park. We're a, a big board now of twelve really committed, passionate members. And we have over a hundred other members. So when we need volunteers, we get them. We, I think we're doing a really good job stewarding our property. Something that we take very seriously. And I think we'd be very good managers of this property. We would have ticket conservation easement on it. So. No, it'll, it'll look the same as it does now. We're not going to allow there to be any development. And we would be happy to include even a reversionary clause if sometime decades in the future. The Bethel Land Trust of, at that time is not taking care of this three and a half acre piece of. The Bethel Land Trust of, at, at that time is not taking care of this three and a half acre piece of property. It could revert back to the town on a show of cause or something, but. I, I don't think this is a bad way of doing things. There's a lot of little properties that the town kind of have scattered all over the place. That's an issue with people dumping things and all kinds of stuff. We don't allow any of that to happen on our property. Everything is, everything is patrolled and, you know, and we will do a good job of keeping that piece of property in a good state as well. So it will provide us access to a part of the preserve that we can't get to except for a long walk. So if anybody's injured, it's, you'd have to carry them all the way out the long way to get them out of there now. So for a lot of reasons, this would really help us with maintaining our own piece of property. And give us the access that we had for many years through the Miller property that we just recently lost.
Was this the part of the coding property?
Yes, it was, exactly, Ken. That's exactly the property.
It is, the property presently is, is deeded to the town of Bethel. And the important thing to remember was part of a subdivision requirement, it's deeded as open space. That's, that's the most important thing. So it is regarded as open space property. The town of Bethel is not using the property for anything at all. I think that the land trust has proven numerous times through the work that they've done at the front preserve, which is owned by the town of Bethel. Even though I consider the land trust the stewards of the property, then the same goes with Overlook Park, which is owned by the town of Bethel. And again, you have them as stewards of the property. But here you have the Bethel Land Trust, which owns property adjacent to it with limited access, who has made a wonderful effort. And has consistently preserved the Wolf Pits Brook area and that surrounding area. And I think it's time for the town to. Appreciate what the land trust has done for us over the last ten years and the people that they've got interested, the families, the kids. It, it's a, it's a great experience. If anybody gets the opportunity and they're looking for it, just to come out and do something, you should do it. But I think it's, it, it would be nice to recognize the efforts that they've made and help them in preserving their open space and having better access to their open space. Now, I know that it would be a, an endeavor to make, have this work. I don't know what, exactly what the process would be, but if the commission were in favor of doing something like this. I would formulate something, send it to the board of selectmen and to town council and, and go from there. And I think it is important just to cover the town of Bethel is to have some type of reversion clause, which we normally do anyways. When you, right, when you, when you donate to a, a land trust society or a nature currency, say you were defunct tomorrow and the properties that you own. Who would they go to?
In, in our case, probably to you, to the town, but it would have to be protected.
Okay.
Or it would have to go.
But it has to go to.
It has to go to another nonprofit.
Right, a nonprofit.
And that's why we would put, right, and that, that's why we would have a conservation easement on it. So that regardless, it couldn't be developed.
It can't be developed. I mean, it's, it can't, right, it would still maintain what it has today.
Exactly.
Because today it is open space and it would still follow that. It's just, to me, it's just a change of ownership.
Now, now, I, I've watched this over the, over the decades now and talking about watching people dumping on property. To see the land trust take over this would give me such great satisfaction and make me feel so much better that this land was going to be kept properly. As the land trust has done with John O'Neill and everybody over the years, it is spectacular job.
And the Boy Scouts.
And the Boy, the Boy Scouts as well too. So I, I, I think this is a great, a great project.
I'm trying to get my head around where this is. So the entrances on Sunset Hill and on Jennifer's Way, are they very narrow little alley-like things or is it like a building lot?
Okay, it's behind Don Goodrich's house.
Okay.
Do you know where down lives?
Kind of.
It's before Jennifer's Way, Jennifer's Way, Sunlight, you should go in, Patty's, take a left. And that little funky little piece, it, it goes out to Jennifer's Way. And the rest of it goes out to Sunset Hill next to a cemetery.
Right next to the cemetery.
Yeah.
To the left of the cemetery.
Would you be putting like a parking area in?
Probably not. If we did, we'd talk to you first.
Yeah.
Would we be blazing any trails through here?
Yes.
Yes.
There would be a trail.
Okay.
To give access to people in Sunset.
Is the access on Sunset is significant or is it just ten feet? I'm trying to figure out the size, is it ten feet wide, is it a hundred feet wide?
What, what is the access, Beth? I know we, David, David, um, walked this with one of my.
Yeah.
Any specifics, I'm just curious. It's, it's a fairly.
What do you think it is, the access on Sunset Hill? It's at least. It's at least. It's at least twenty-five.
Yeah, that, that's correct. I, I would say it's, 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 if it's more than seventy-five feet, I, I would be surprised, but the twenty-five to seventy-five feet width sounds about right.
I was just looking for the twenty-five in case there is, you do want to provide parking in there.
Right, and that, maybe that would be something in the future, we'll talk to them. Right now, we literally just want access.
Right.
Right.
We just need access to that part of the park. But yeah, in the future, we don't have a lot of parking right now. So this would, and this is something that people in the area have mentioned to us would be great if we had a way to get there. And it's funny, we still have the sign in the backyard of, of the Miller's place, literally on their property. That's the old entrance, we said one of those big Bethel Land Trust sites that we could easily take uproot and put, move it over just to get it out of that field. They haven't sent anything to us, but yeah.
It barely touches on the BLT property, but it's enough to.
It's just enough, it's just enough to give us that access.
Exactly.
To get in that back corner.
So the support. We have to figure out how to do this, don't we?
Beth, do you?
Yes.
Do you want, do you want an official number on that width for the access to that lot?
Just curious, David.
It's about Bethel GIS, I'll, I'll pull it up here on my screen so everybody can see it.
I have it covered, David.
Okay.
I'm all set.
This is about ninety-two feet, it looks like.
Perfect, thank you.
That was good.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's three hundred thirty-three.
My, my, so everybody sounds like, my recommendation is that, um, make a recommendation to the board of selectmen to explore the possible.
Transition of the lands to the Bethel Land Trust.
Conveyance, thank you.
Thank you.
Good work.
Will there be any like things due to protect me, the homeowners in here to keep them trespassing or trails being accidentally blazed on their property? I've heard that's already happened off the front property in Newtown once.
Not from us.
From anybody I know.
But so what we will do, but it's a good question. We will put property boundary signs up.
Okay.
In fact, we're doing that, we're just waiting for the town, the town had to order them for the front preserve because we just accessed. The, the property that was purchased off Shelly Road.
Right.
Last year, we now have a trail running through that. So we're waiting for the town to, to get their property boundary markers, but we have our own so that, and they're prominent. And everybody will see them and they're put along the border to tell people who are on our property, that's private land. And you're, and you, you know, don't be kind to our neighbors.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we will do that. But yeah, no, we haven't had any, we haven't had any complaints about that. We do use the GIS as well. We have a couple of different apps to, to, to get pretty, you know, they're pretty exact on where we can put the trail, but we're really careful not to, not to trespass on anyone else's property. In fact, one of our biggest expenses that we incur is actually removing trees that are threatening other people's property. You know, again, with the ass trees, you know, we have spent tens of thousands of dollars protecting neighbors' property and streets and power lines. And all those kinds of things, so yeah, we, we're careful about that.
Sounds good.
So it is a consensus of the commission.
Yeah.
Yes, to formulate, and, and at least let's continue this discussion, but bring it to the higher level.
Thank you folks, I appreciate your time. Good to everybody. Good luck.
Thank you, Lou. Go ahead and tell the guys to come back in. So you have to go through the rest of your meeting, right? Thanks for letting Lou come in. You just want to start it, I guess.
So to continue our. Planning and drawing meetings. The agenda would be a minute from the ten twenty-five meeting, sort of a half, three, four, five.
Now just ask the question, is this meeting being recorded?
Sure, yes, yeah, absolutely.
I'm not seeing it.
It's, it's recording, Penny.
It's recording, okay, cool.
It said so at the beginning.
Okay.
Top left.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve events of the ten twenty-five, twenty-two meeting.
Second, second, on favor. Maze. So moved. Do we have any invoices?
Yes, we do. One thousand six hundred and six dollars and six cents.
Could you work that out? Nancy, how much?
One six oh six and six cents. We, they had a balance forward, obviously, when they printed this. They hadn't yet received that check, that was the last meeting's check was two grand and something. So I just took that out, added up, you know, what we had since, and it's one six oh six oh six. Maybe we should use.
Yeah, that's, that's really odd.
Make a motion to pay the due times invoice of sixteen oh six oh six, second, on favor.
Next on the agenda is RBA Realty Seventy Stoney Hill Road.
And your staff report, you have a motion.
I got, it's a motion to approve.
Okay.
That was your consensus at the last meeting.
Right, yeah. Everybody's better.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve a site plan and special permit for construction of a second story addition associated with difference on a one point three five acre parcel in the R six. Row located at seventy Stoney Hill Road, map eighty-three, block one twelve, lot eleven, seven to the following stipulations, one through six reasons engraving this approval of the planning. Status of proposed plan is substantial, is in substantial compliance with the zoning regulations of the town of Bethel. And the project is constructed according to the reference plans and stipulations, but have a positive effect on neighboring properties or the development of the surrounding district.
Second.
All favor. Maze. So moved. Next, new business. Thank you, everybody.
Good night, Beth. Good night, Arrows.
New construction, three family, twenty Worcester Street.
Okay, new business, Bavario Twenty Worcester Street Site Plan, New Destruction, Three Family. The reverse application located in the Village Center leasing zone and the TOD overlay zone is for construction of a three family dwelling. In addition to an existing two family unit on twelve thousand four hundred and fifty-four three feet property. The application should be, be present to the town departments for review.
And before the applicant starts, I just want to mention to the commission that they are going to be doing a presentation tonight. Under the TOD regulations, it's not required for a public hearing. You do have the option of scheduling a public hearing if you so desire. But I thought it would be better if you listened to their initial presentation and then you can make that decision.
Thanks, good evening, Peter Olson again. I'll go through the full introduction since we're not in a public year. Here tonight on behalf of Maria Sperviero, who is the owner of twenty Worcester Street. Window, you can see the back of it right over there. I put up on the screen, the Google Street View of the existing home. And you can see the municipal center park a lot in the back, let's show you where it is. Property consists of point two eight five acres of land. And it's located in the double R ten zone with TOD overlay. Uh, under the TOD overlay density is set thirty units per acre. And so our calculation is that we can build eight and a half units under that math. We're not proposing that. The existing structure on the property is a two-family home built in nineteen thirty-five. And what we're proposing to do is add a second structure that contains three units, so we'll have a total of five. Down to use this mouse. Neighborhood is similarly sized homes of different ages and quality. This, these have with the, with retaining walls across the street. This is the, the red house that's between the two driveways to the municipal center.
It's a separate structure, not an addition, correct?
For, for us, yeah, it'll be a separate structure, we'll get into that in a second. We struggled with the appropriate layout for this, particularly with trying to get the units that the TOD allowed and just decided it wasn't feasible to do eight and a half units. We really struggled with getting a parking spaces and that dictated for us the number of units that were feasible on the site is no more than five. That allows all the parking to be in the back, that allows us to not have any parking in the sides or on the drives and not use any in the front yard for parking either. That it can stay as a landscape front yard in a, in a wooded downtown street, basically. Let me, you know, let me skip by this for a minute. Making a game time decision to just go right to the architecture. So the proposal, as I said, is a three unit building. I'll go through the floor plans in a minute, but some of the units are split top and bottom and one is on the bottom floor. It is taller than the building next to it, not by a small amount, but the reason for that is in nineteen thirty-five, people were shorter and they built shorter buildings. So in order for us to get full eight foot ceilings, this is what's necessary. It is a little bit taller than the existing building, but you can see them sit next to each other, propose for porch and the windows. There's a small alleyway between the two. That should show now there. And then that's from the other side. As you can see, we have that baton board that's proposed for the siding on the new structure. And that's a photograph of what it looks like up close. One of the questions Alyssa Volpotti had for us was what that would be made of and it would be hardy wood. Was more durable than wood. Floor plans in the basement, there's one unit, living area and two bedrooms in the basement. And then the other two are split downstairs, upstairs with living area and then two bedrooms upstairs. This just shows the drawings that were, the pretty pictures, elevations were derived from.
Entry to the lower unit only from the rear.
Correct, correct. That, if you, if we go back to this, that preserves the look and feel of a, you know, traditional downtown home with, with a front door entrance there for that unit. Okay, let me have Dynas start talking about our site plan.
Is that sloped out the back of that, or is that an excavation?
That's the Dynas into that as, as he goes through his presentation. Dynas, what do you want me to put out the site plan?
Sure, you know, I can, I can either present here or there.
I'll do both.
We're both.
Both, I think is good.
So, yeah, for, for the record, Dynas, the biggest professional engineer. On behalf of the applicant. So the existing two-family structure is located essentially on the property, on the existing driveway. Leading along the, the northern property line. What our proposal is, is to build a similarly sized structure to the south of the existing building. And as Peter had discussed, or shown, there's a covered porch on the front. Front access way, a front door access to split upstairs, downstairs type unit. Rear of the building will have a door accessing underneath for the lower level unit, which will have two window wells on the side. Window wells, you know, about three and a half feet tall, give or take, will flow. Window wells, you know, about three and a half feet tall, give or take, full. Entry windows or accessible windows for emergency purposes. The upper unit from the rear will be accessed via some existing stairs and then a stair is shown there, a stair that runs along the face of the proposed building. To a little porch which is located directly above the door underneath. Parking for this development. We've got eleven parking spaces proposed, including one handicap space. Based on the calculations, eleven point two five parking spaces are required, so we've got well, we've got eleven. And then we've got a bike ride proposed to compensate as the TOD allows. For additional parking space for the site. Full compliance with parking requirements. Stormwater management will be handled in the back parking area. We did soil tests on this particular site down to nine feet, beautiful sandy material. Difficult to keep storm, difficult to keep water in it. When conducting preparation tests. Stormwater management system. Without issue on the existing soils, it's a nice, nice thing to get every once in a while. Sanitary sewer for the proposed building will be into Worcester Street as will our connection to potable water. And we because we've got three units, the units I believe are supposed to be fully sprinkled, so we'll have the benefit of that as well. Key element here in speaking with staff and aside from the architectural view was or is landscaping. And right now, what exists in front of the site is a small hedge of mixed variety of different plants. And what we proposed to do here is take away that hedge because there's no one else on the road that has a hedge there. Put in a couple of flowering cherry trees in the front and then. You know, for for street trees and then run ourselves in and. Put put plantings on either side of existing and or proposed walkways and these. Hedges that we're proposing will provide a nice barrier for. Walkway, the delay of the walkway will help break up the massing of of the existing home as well as the proposal.
Public sidewalk on that street there.
Correct, it's a public sidewalk that runs along here and we've got an existing sidewalk that accesses the existing two units. There's a door here and then it's a door. This location and then we propose the sidewalk to connect to our front door. As well as connect out to the back so that people that access this building and the front unit for here. Will walk up and have the benefit of the sidewalk. In front or accessing the units. Pretty straightforward and happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Thanks, Dynas. Before we submitted our application, we made a review process with the Village District Consultant, Architectural Consultant Alyssa Volpotti. And we went, it took us a couple of months to go through that, but we did that before we even came to you so that we resolved any issues that she might have. She prepared a letter dated August twenty ninth with six comments. The first comment dealt with ADA access to the building in the rear, Dynas, and can you confirm that that's what we're doing?
Yes. We made sure that the the unit in the back is fully handicap accessible from the outside and the architect is. Put together the drawings on the interior that allow it to also be accessible.
So your apartment downstairs is one floor?
Yes, yes.
She questioned whether the siding was wood or what it was, and as I said, it's going to be hardy board siding. A question about the stair railing and she wanted a confirmation that it would be pressure treated lumber. But PVC or paintable wood for the railings was her preference and refined the bat painted white. That the the heating would be with a split mini system. Which requires condensers on the outside, like you'd see with an air conditioning condenser. And so those will be, you know, somewhere on the outside of the building, but they there won't be grates in the walls of any of the units for air conditioner. The windows are double hung windows with divided light patterns with exterior cladding in black, just to confirm that, which we are. And gutters and leaders will be painted white to match the siding, so all the comments in her letter, we have no issues with it and we're confirming her suppositions on that. And as I said, we submitted to her all the materials that were required for her review, including the photographs of the the neighboring homes. The photograph of the actual material that we're going to use, et cetera, et cetera. So that's all we have for tonight, we don't think there's any need for a public hearing, the TOD doesn't require one. It requires a site plan application. We know we have to wait for an engineering report, we don't have that from Mr. De Mayo. But we thought we were in good enough shape to present this whole thing to you tonight and wait for that report to see if there's anything we have to address. Obviously, even if we don't have a public hearing, members of the public who are here, English to comment, should be invited to comment. I don't think we need the formality of a public here. Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question. Could you just go back again over the access to the lower apartment, please? I'm confused.
Okay, well, let me put up. Floor plan first.
Okay.
So you can see the. This mouse is working.
That's that's the lower unit.
This is the lower unit, living area, eating area, two bedrooms on the lower unit.
Okay, and the entrance is.
Right here.
Where is parking for that?
Right behind.
Let me go back now to Dynas's site plan and let him start talking.
Okay. Okay.
Those are stairs down.
That's the handicap sign?
Yeah, so this the handicap space and then there's an offload space that's eight feet wide right in front of the.
All right, okay. Thank you.
I didn't understand what you were talking about the heating here, there there there's a unit outside, but there's no bins?
Yeah, that's the way the split systems work, I mean, I don't know how they work, but.
Radiator system or something?
Inside, I believe they're air, so they're grates inside. But what you see when you have like a heat pump, which is a newer system that can do both air conditioning and heat. You see units mounted on the walls or you see grates cut under the windows. And for for that to go in, to, I mean, that's not how this works, so the the question was, you know, we're showing this pretty picture. Are we then going to cut a bunch of holes inside for the heat? And the answer is no, there'll be condenser units, you know, next to the basement wall, they'll get in there somehow. And as soon as ductwork goes inside, but.
So there's five apartments in all, both houses?
Two in the existing home.
That's right.
Three in the new one.
So there's five.
Could you just say what what are the bedroom counts in both of?
In the new structure, they're all two bedrooms, I don't actually.
So we have three two bedrooms in the new structure.
Yes. I don't actually know.
Existing.
I don't actually know, but.
Think the, I don't have the field card, but I think the field card said five bedrooms.
I I I don't trust the field cards, if you could find out that that information for me, I'd appreciate it. That would be helpful. But I'm sure it's a two bedroom.
Will the reading update?
Hold on one second, hold on one second. Why is that doing?
It was when you spoke.
Should be fixed now, Beth.
Thank you.
It was definitely.
All right, so the proposed is all. Free two bedrooms and the existing are two apartments, but we're not quite sure. Are they a minimum of two bedrooms each, do you think, or is there maybe three, one of them are? Could you check with the?
I'll find out from the.
We're getting it.
Because I think that information's important.
Can you give us a total square foot of impervious indoor percentage? Of open and not?
I'm sorry? It's a parking lot, right, right, just saying, yeah. No space at all.
Peter, can you, I'm sorry, I don't have the site plan, it's strange, can you go?
Oh my gosh, I can't read that. So existing impervious coverage is twenty nine point seven five and will be seventy two point nine, it looks like. Impervious cover.
So by reducing the number of units that we proposed, we were able to avoid using any portion of the side yards or front yards for parking. And that. Preserved a significant amount of the look and feel of these buildings from the street. With all the parking in the back.
But in the TOD regulations themselves, they speak about. When you talk about parking in the front, you're talking about parking in the front pertaining to being consistent with the rest of the street. Like if you're in Greenwood Avenue, yes, you could park in the front if you're also. Similar to where the CVS parking area is and things of that nature, that is where it's applicable for that type of parking to occur.
I don't think we should. Focus too much on recent developments of parking in the front on Worcester Street because. There's a significant amount of recent development on Worcester Street on that side of the street that does have parking in the front, which I particularly don't like.
The the two family ones, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, down by Hickok?
It's not that far away from.
No, but that was that was in the last twenty years.
Right, yeah, yeah, and so my my point is, we wanted to avoid that. We didn't want, didn't want to do that.
Right.
And so we didn't. But the result of that was had to reduce the unit count significantly.
But. We can discuss that later. But part of the reason for the parking regulations to read as they do now is because of mistakes that the commission and the regulations have made in the past.
Yeah.
And so we tried to create, correct that issue. By doing what we did. Okay, that's all.
I was ready to upgrade to the existing building, I think.
Um, we haven't owned this property that long, in a couple of years, and so they may renovate the existing building, but I would say no, except that on our. Architecture, we're showing that building is gray.
That's right.
And I noticed that the actual existing one is white, so maybe they'll paint it.
Yeah.
Not not sure, not certain about that.
Cool to think which.
I think it's going to be important to have a discussion with our architect in regards to. The thought process that she used in coming up with the hardy board and the vertical siding.
She didn't come up with hardy board.
She.
We we, she said, what will it be? And we said, in response to her comment.
Yes.
Tonight, it'll be hardy board.
Okay.
I'll read you her comment.
I don't have it with me, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
And and so if no one's aware, hardy board is is.
We know what it is.
A cement board, so it's durable and.
Much more durable, but it also looks a lot better than vital.
But the vertical is was, is more my question, that was something that you both came to a mutual.
I think we proposed, I think we proposed it and she's amenable to it.
Okay.
And she's been amenable to it on other projects.
She has been amenable to it on other projects, I agree, but in this particular instance, you're talking about. I'm looking at the homes surrounding the area, so I just have questions in relation to what's being proposed to the other homes around the area because it is a home that's fronting on the. Main Worcester Street, so I think it's important for us to discuss.
Don't think it makes any difference to us, what it, what it is.
But I need to, I am not an architect, so I need, I think it's important for the commission to understand the thought process.
Isn't that the style that was used?
For having vertical, it's ten Worcester.
On the apartments, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought, it's the same thing.
So same.
Yes, that's what I thought.
Will we be an attic?
It's just a question that I think we should discuss.
No, just to finish things. As I said, I don't think it matters whether we do vertical board or horizontal board, it's whatever the commission prefers, really. But if 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 you can ask Alyssa what her thoughts are as to why that's appropriate.
Absolutely.
I'd be interested to know too, because there's been a lot of building here and elsewhere in the state using this vertical. That feels like a throwback and feels like it's nice. Whether it is or not.
I guess I have trouble understanding what the throwback was. A throwback to where?
I think it's more of a barn style.
Okay.
Why why have that?
No, let's, we can, we can hold off, I don't need to.
How many units are affordable? Just one.
I don't think any are required, the TOD plan says more than five. So we don't provide any affordable units. So in the back, and even though we have to reduce, if we had had six units, for example, one would have to be affordable.
That's unfortunate.
I believe it says more than five, but I always have to check.
Yeah.
I can never remember off the top of my head.
If I'm wrong and it says five or or less, five, five or more, then we'll provide one, you know, in accordance with the standard affordability plan.
All right, so this needs to be referred out to all the other departments for review. To see you're aware of that, the initial discussion.
Our hope is that we can have that review conducted and be back at your December meeting.
So that that top floor is nothing where that window is?
Nothing.
Well, why? Why why is it?
The architect thought it looked good.
Looks nice.
You think so?
Yeah. I definitely wouldn't want it to be blank, but.
No, but.
And it's better than gray.
If it wasn't there, the building wouldn't have to be as high as as it is.
No, I think.
They need it for the ceilings.
The height is based on the ceilings and then the peak is based on what looks good.
So so that, so that's actually. That actually goes right, the apartment goes up there?
Not that high, it's just.
I mean, the the ceilings are that tall?
But if you look at where the window is, the ceiling is, you know, probably right about where this.
So that's, so that's empty wasted space.
It's not wasted space, you know, peaked roofs look good.
And in the, any attic space.
My point is, if it's not used, will never be used space.
It's a, it's.
It's not living space.
It's not living space. It's attic space, got it.
But it's not a attic, is what he said.
So it could be.
I I suspect it'll be like in my house, it's a giant, like I call it the octopus.
Oh, I.
Feeding it, it's got the tubes all over.
Oh, I have one. I have one of those.
I suppose somebody could put plywood down on the rafters and store stuff up there, but. I threaten my parents, I'm just going to plaster over the entrance to their attic, so.
I'm sure they'd love that.
Yeah. But the the point is to match the pitch of the roof with the neighborhood and the existing house, they don't look to me to be exactly the same, but they're pretty close. And, you know, pitch roof is an architectural feature. The pitch of the roof is an architectural feature that makes it, you know, pleasing to the eye, so even though the spaces.
Snow will.
Well, the snow will fall off at a lesser angle, sure, but. We have a lot of variety in our downtown, there's different houses and different pitches.
How does the height compare to other houses in the area?
They much taller?
I don't think it'll be much taller, particularly since across the street is significantly higher.
Oh, because of the height, well, that's because of the land too.
Yeah, well, it's, you know, it's got two layers of retaining wall, for instance, to get across the street, this this house is significantly higher.
And houses are constructed by giants because of how high they are.
Right.
But, you know, as I pointed out. The floor height, the story height, long ago was not as high. My house is six foot ten ceilings, so, you know.
The exception.
To to get eight foot ceilings. It just makes it taller, there's nothing we can do about that. And then, you know, we could put a flat roof on it, sure, and that would be glass, but that would, we think, look pretty dumb.
So that's, do we have to make a motion not to hold a public hearing or to hold a public hearing, which is because of the TOD, we don't have to.
You you have the option of having a public hearing if you would like one. Or if you just want to continue with the review of the site plan, you can do that also, I think.
Just say it.
I, i- if you don't have a public hearing, you do have a few people in the. One is already shaking their head at me, I don't feel it. I'm a certain street and I'm like, I'm getting the no, but somebody. I'm a certain street and I'm like, I'm getting the no, but somebody may want to say something as a courtesy. I I don't know how you want to run this. Sometimes it can be very challenging, but it's up to you.
I don't have any issue with open questions if the public wants to ask questions as long as the applicant's meaningful of that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I'm always in favor of public comment.
Yeah, I I would rather preempt than.
I'm just, you know, I'm letting you do what you want to do, but I want it to be your decision.
I'm I'm fine.
I agree with you.
If the public.
I agree with you. So anybody ask me?
Can you make a comment?
Sure. Who is?
I think we ought to go away right now and just have them continue to review this without a public hearing. And that 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 was a a key part of the TOD was to, you know, make this process a little bit easier.
Agreed, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions from the audience? Patrick?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Your name and address, please.
BJ Liberty, A Green Street. Um, on the diagram of the house or the 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 illustration of the house, the side view going down, um, you described it was going to be window wells in the basement, but that looks like it's a regular window. So did I misunderstand when you said window wells?
You probably can't see that.
The the architect has asked that we add in window wells for the the bedrooms will be located I guess on the front portion of the home and in order to, in in order to have access for emergency purposes, they need to have a window well either side or for.
So the window shown here will be at the rear of the building. And is that actually going to be a window or is that just rendering?
No, that that, this is, this is a rendering. I believe that the slope will be a little more gradual than what's shown from the front to the rear and because it'll be gradual, we'll need to.
So it'll be more like, but did you turn that so?
Oh, yes.
Let's see what you're talking about here.
So the 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 building for the lower level will have its common areas and kitchen and so on in the in the rear portion of the new building, the new home. And the bedrooms will be split down the middle, one on one side and one on the other, and they'll have full windows within a well for access. And well, I mean, you know, three, three foot tall.
And that may be a grade, the top of those might be grade or above grade.
The walls?
Yeah, will, the wells.
The 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 wells will be above above grade and and the windows themselves will be, you know, visible above grade.
The windows are full sized windows.
Yes.
Yes.
Within the wells. They're required to be because for a bedroom, you can get out.
Yeah, progress.
Naming addresses, please.
Yeah, Jan White, Tim Diamond, David, I'm sorry. I'm hanging around here too long because my first thought was, look for the green spaces in the front. And that's been a concern with other places in town.
Should check out the green. There is green space along the one whole side. It does seem to be, right?
That's a driveway going down.
No, 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 on on the side of the new house.
Side of the new house.
The new house.
But may I turn it around?
Please.
So. So this is Worcester Street, you'll be on your right, and then, you know, this lines show the landscaping in the front here, and then there's of course landscaping on the south side along New North.
So what is the width of that green space there? And the new, I don't, along the side.
Along the side here?
Yes.
About four or five feet.
That's it?
Yeah, 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 this is a tense scale.
So there really isn't any green space for the people in that building at all?
This is it, yeah, this is at the nearest point. Of course, along the driveway, it's it's an existing condition, so. Keeping the green space that's there.
What, my friends, you you see where the with the handicap parking is there? Okay, I, you take your finger and come all the way down to it. Along the the bottom line, yeah. Couldn't that be green space right there?
Oh, yeah, this is.
No, no, no. It's showing, it's showing white, yeah. No, no, no.
It's a parking space, kidding.
Yeah, this is a.
Oh, that's a parking space there too?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that.
It's all asked for.
Created in areas for handicap.
I know that. I thought the other parking was all down the front, down the back, because there was only one space there. So there's no green space for that, for those people.
One solution to that would be to reduce the parking requirement or the TOD zone.
But there's two, there's two, there's two apartments, there's two bedrooms.
I understand, but the the calculations that we see for how much parking is actually required for developments of two, the two bedroom units is about one point five.
Yeah.
And for one bedroom unit is one. And so, you know, there's a compromise of, do you want more parking? Fine, that's great, but we gotta pave it.
That's fine when a young cop moves in and has a baby. When the baby baby reaches sixteen, they want a parking space.
But that, but at that point, they go buy a house or they move somewhere else. I mean, you know, the occupancy of two bedroom units is is not always two people. It's one person who wants an office, you know, they're willing to pay for that.
With all due respect, we don't know how many bedrooms are in the other building.
We don't, but it'll be four or five, so.
Yeah, exactly.
You know.
There could be two bedrooms in that whole, two single units. Doesn't sound like there is, but.
The real estate listing says three up, three down.
So.
Was that what it's?
What did the field card say?
The real estate listing said three up, three down.
Three bedrooms?
Yep. Three bedroom, one down.
Oh, three bedrooms.
Real estate.
That's a real estate listing, you know, sometimes they.
Yeah, yeah, they would do that, yeah.
No, is the site, is it gonna have its own dumpster or how's the trash?
That would just individual containers. People would say.
We'll.
I did have my streets in. Wait for the comments to come in, see what the other people say.
Okay, okay, so you want to refer.
Yeah, refer this to.
Motion to refer it.
Motion to refer.
Somebody make a motion to return, tell me what you want to do and.
And no public hearing required.
And come back in December?
Sixty five days.
No, I understand.
I'm just, I, you know.
What I'm suggesting is that we don't go back at the next meeting.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, no, I agree.
And that we continue at your first meeting in December, and hopefully we're done and we don't have to wait till the new year.
Right.
That would be our hope, but.
So.
To December.
We need a, we need a vote. All in favor? Against? Abstentions?
Is this for the motion to refer it out or is this for the motion to have a public hearing?
No motion.
Motion is to refer the application to the departments for review and with the consensus that a public hearing is required and they'll reconvene in December to review the project. How's that?
Exactly what I said.
I'm sorry.
Exactly what I said.
I wasn't listening to what you said, so I thought I would. I tried to paraphrase.
Thank you.
I was just trying to paraphrase. Okay. This was, did you guys think about?
We did.
Yes, we did.
I was writing something else.
Field card says six bedrooms also.
Sorry.
The field card says six bedrooms also.
You're gonna.
We'll, we'll confirm just the same.
Okay, so they're done?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm up.
Thank you. Still practicing in the area? I haven't seen you.
Okay, so. Um, the last several meetings we've had. We've had a few discussions about TOD recommendations, okay? And changes that you want to save. I think it's important to try to put something together and schedule a public hearing for it. If you're, if this is the way you want to go. So the the first section I dealt with was maximum building height limitation. Again, if you guys can understand this, that's great. If I need more in depth, I can give you examples, maybe with visuals and things like that would help you to understand. So under the maximum building height in a multi-family, three stories would be allowed in the underlying zone if it's an industrial or commercial. All other zones shall follow the height limitations for that zone. So if you were in a residential, a double or a two family zone, an RMO zone, you would have to follow the requirements that, as they are now. And it's the same for any type of building of a single family home. It's two and a half stories or thirty five feet. That's the standard for all residential zones here in town. Do you get, you guys, you get that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, in a mixed use, now this is another change that you have all talked about to some degree in a mixed use. Again, in Route Six, you eliminated the Schmood, which was four stories. What we're doing here is we're saying, we're changing it from four stories to three stories if it's a mixed use commercial development. Okay, so what that means is you can have one floor of commercial and the other two stories would be residential, right? Mixed use is not allowable within the residential underlying zone. So you're looking at it purely from a commercial or industrial property point of view. This is, this is interesting. And if you can visualize this, remember we talked a little bit about some of the developments that are coming before you. Not that many, but there is no concept of open space or open space for amenities associated with somebody living there, okay? What? One way to correct that issue is to, right now, in most zones of the town of Bethel, we deal with what is called the footprint of the building. Now, we have a new zone, which is called the RMO, RMO East. It was east or west. I I look at it, Peter, because Peter was one of the.
It's it's east, Bethel.
It's east, thank you. So with RMO East, instead of, instead of the percentage of coverage being based on a structure, it's based on a permeable surface. So I tried to give you what is impervious surface. So it takes into consideration all the, you know, the driveways, parking lots, your sidewalks, and it's basing your lot coverage on everything. And it's paved, built, or whatever. It's considered impervious surface. Now, that is different than how the regulations read now. It's all by building coverage. And by doing that, to an extent, you're creating the green spaces that are needed on your smaller lots. Most more particularly.
Just like the moment you just looked at.
The, um. It's it's really not, no, but you have to take into consideration that any application that you've had before you or is actively before you now, this is something you're proposing for the future, not for today.
Correct.
Any of you that are newer to the commission may not be aware of that. It doesn't change an application midstream. What you have in front of you, you have in front of you. What is appealed is appealed, but these are basics for starting to look at, how can we fix some of the regulations going forward? Because what I think a lot of people don't understand, you know, this is a new regulation. Yeah, it's been here since twenty eighteen. But you don't see how these regulations work until you start working with them and you see some of the developments associated with it. And that's when you start tweaking and you and you start correcting some things that you may be uncomfortable with. And so this is an attempt to do that. The other thing that we have discussed is, and I just want to verify that with you, that instead of going to thirty units an acre and you wanted to reduce that to twenty units an acre in the commercial and industrial zone. Am I correct in that? Okay. And that's, that's how far, that's as far as I've gotten so far. But I think it is a good starting place. And I'd like to see us put something together and and start with this, you know, at least let's get into the public hearing format so we can receive comments about that.
Good start.
I think it's a good start.
It's a very good start. Yeah.
It, we're realizing, okay, we need to make these changes, we need to do this, and and it's, that's how you, that's how you make things better. So we're in agreement?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Do you want to schedule a public hearing for December?
For what, for the room?
For the last meeting of the year.
Last meeting of the year. I don't have my calendar in front of me. I I refuse to think it's December, but I mean, look.
We're getting there, folks.
I know. So sad.
Yes.
December twenty, the thirteenth? December thirteenth?
Yeah.
December thirteenth is the second.
Yes, Tuesday. Yes, it is.
All right, so why don't we do that? Schedule a public hearing for December thirteenth?
So.
That's all I have.
That's good. Excellent.
Have any comments from the public before we, your discussion points before we close the meeting?
Well, I'll say something. So John Lennon, sixteen old Turnpike Road, I think the commission as a whole, I've been watching the last couple TOD applications that came in, and I think we have to be very careful as a commission to consider what works for all of Bethel. When I was part of creating and drafting a TOD, it was very important for us to give the applicant the tools to be successful. So if you think that the answer to a TOD is to slash units because it's not as scary, you're you're creating something that may never be built because the applicant can't afford to do it. Thank you.
BJ Liberty, A Green Street. I think also, as you consider the TOD, you still have to take into consideration the the infrastructure, the fact that you don't have the roads that you had in your plan. Even in your plan of conservation and development, it says implement the transportation recommendations in the Bethel Forward Plan, including the construction of additional rail crossings in downtown Bethel. You don't have that, you don't have those extra ways to feed traffic away from a site. And if you, you just can't build and build and build and not have a way to get the pressure out of downtown.
I think the coverage change would be a disaster. I've, my experience has been that it is extremely difficult to meet the density requirement of the TOD and provide all the infrastructure and still a room on the property. And that's something that needs to be tweaked, whether that's tweaking it on the density side or on the parking side. You know, both of both of those. But I think that if you had to count all of your hard scape as coverage, you would have zero development downtown area. It's just not possible. You know, the downtown is already densely built, it's already paved, it's already sidewalked. We have very little green space as it is, but the whole point of a dense downtown is your green space is provided by Polo Park, by PT Barnum Square, by Overlook Park, by the municipal center lawn. That's where the green space is. It's not on quarter acre lots. So I I think if you make that change, you will kill all development. It's just not possible to meet that requirement.
I disagree with you, Peter. I I think your point is very valid in talking about the commercial areas of the downtown area. and of, um, industrial areas along those lines, I, I agree, and I make, I made that note just now. But I think that it's important because of the, uh, of the residential areas. When you're dealing with smaller eight, uh, ten, fifteen thousand square foot lots, the, 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 uh, the intent of the TOD regulations was to create the possibility of doing, um, what we did, for example, at two twenty Greenwood Avenue, what we have done, um, over here at ten Worcester Street.
Neither possible if you make the coverage change.
But, but let me finish, the intent there was to not create large buildings. The whole premise of TOD is smaller buildings and smaller units, and that is yet to be seen, except for the exception over at two twenty Greenwood Avenue, and over at, um, Grand Street, uh, with the, uh, which really was the, when the conversion of the barn, um, over at two thirty-five Greenwood Avenue. There's another one, a smaller footprint, again, people don't know about these, because those footprints were less than a thousand square feet. Therefore, they didn't require a public here, but they're still, they're one bedroom units, there are no children involved with these units. So you don't need the added amenities that are associated with the, with that type of structure. What I think the commission is trying to do is make an attempt for property owners and developers to see that you can get it, and this was the premise of the TOD. You don't need the large structures to get the, the unit sizes, or get the unit count that you want.
None of the projects you just mentioned would be possible if you adopted this coverage requirement.
Not that, um.
Grand Street wouldn't, two twenty Greenwood, two twenty-two Greenwood wouldn't. It's just not, just.
Okay.
You, you, you can't count.
But again. But again, what we're.
And then require more parking than, you know, the state legislature wants you to require.
But again, the regulation, we're putting together the, these regulations, these are good thoughts that you're bringing to us, but it, and we'll do it at, you know, we'll get the input at a public hearing. It's not like it's written in stone, I mean, Peter understands that, you all understand that, it is like, this is what we've come up with. If you disagree with us, help us.
It's a process.
Put something better together, is what we're saying.
I, I get that, but then you scheduled the public hearing for less than a month away with an inter-reading holiday, which doesn't give anybody any time to put it, something together to bring to you, to show you that this decision is, is going to.
But who says the public hearing is gonna stop in December, it'll probably go to January. We have to start the conversation, because we only have one meeting in December, and we don't meet again, probably for another four to six weeks.
Yeah.
That's my thought, we have to start the conversation.
Is this still public input?
Yes, I guess.
Cynthia McCorkin, Dell nineteen, alternate on here, I had a Florida finance meeting, so I, you know, I understand the topic that you're speaking about, so I just wanted to, you know, I've been thinking a lot about TOD and reading Bethel Forward, and just comparing it to the way life is now, the way it was when that was decided. There's just so many variables, and it's not just about, uh, you know, coverage, it's about the infrastructure, as was pointed out, also, you know, lifestyle has shifted, it's not, um, it's not as transportationally, if that's a word, based, um, as was thought of when we initially enacted Bethel Forward. And there are other things to keep in mind, that when, when is it too much density? I mean, when, there shouldn't be density, just for the point of density, and I sympathize with developers, but I also sympathize with people like myself who live in a small neighborhood, who, um, uh, the tr, the traffic shifts, and like you said, we don't have the roads in place. We, we may have to even upgrade water and sewer, and those things have to be in place before we just keep developing and developing. A, and, and then I also, I just wanna mention that, you know, we have to make sure that the revenue is, is enough to make it worthwhile, because it's not just about free for all for developers, you know, fair enough, you wanna develop your land, that's funny. But if we balance it off with, you know, we have to know what the tax revenue is gonna be, if it's going to be worth it. It has to be, you know, a, a cooperative situation, and it just seems like it's, this, and I think a lot of this has to do with the state regulations, that it's become an adversarial, uh, relationship, and that's, that's unfortunate. But I'm just real, I really wanna just commend you for hat, starting this conversation, because I think it's really important, and thank you.
Peter, appreciate your point. We, we need the input.
John Lennon, sixteen alternative, I think it's important for the new commissioners to really understand that the TOD study was not done in two or three public hearings, there was roundtables, develops, everybody was brought in, and experts. I was on the commission for nineteen years, I didn't buy into TOD until I sat there for six, seven, eight months, listening to everyone, and my unit count and what we came up with of thirty was a work in progress that, that got bumped up for a lot of reasons, it wasn't just a number that we decided, because we're in, you're working with the developers and saying, oh, we want them to make lots of money, and they're greedy. It was a formula that made sense, so that the TOD study didn't get put on a shelf and never get put in, in, in action, okay? It was, we worked on what worked for everyone, so that downtown in undesirable industrial pieces of property could get redeveloped, especially around the train tracks, to make Bethel better, okay? It wasn't just a number that we thought thirty would be a great number, it was a number that we all decided worked for the town, the developer, and the need for affordable housing in our beautiful town.
John?
Okay, any other?
And I'm sorry, so the reason I wanted to mention what I just said, is if you open up a public hearing in, in between Christmas and New Year's, and ask the public to come in, and the public is sensitive right now to a current application or a pending application, and if you take public input for a couple of, uh, public hearings, and then make decisions based on what you heard the negativity from those couple hearings, I don't think it's fair, the process, that seven or eight of us sat through for almost a year to come up with a study that would work for Bethel, that was the point I was trying to make. So if you schedule a public hearing in December, you get a couple people there that don't like it, and then all of a sudden, the flavor of the commission is, I guess we don't like it, and we change it. I don't think you're being fair to the process that we worked on for a very long time to make successful, and the TOD work in the town.
Good point, it's really a good point.
It is a good point, maybe we should delay it until January. And then you wouldn't have that, the one that laps.
Yeah, spread it out.
In between, but, but even more together.
I would, I would also argue that, um, transportation is transient, so to speak. Um. We have been, um, going into New York City periodically, trying to park in southeast. We went into New York City last week, or two weeks ago, and we found one parking space that we could use. And when I called the, um, parking company, I said, suppose there wasn't anything there, and we have a train, and we have to be someplace, and basically, they said, well, you know, go to Brewster, go to Golden's Bridge, go somewhere else. So what I'm getting at is that for a very long time, you could park anywhere in southeast.
Yeah.
Anywhere, uh, it's, it's a massive parking space, parking thing, for the, for the daily parking, it's really, really big. The permanent parking is a whole other story. Tons of, tons and tons of unused spaces, it's not like that anymore. So I suspect that while COVID did a number on local transportation, and it did, it, ridership was down, I'm not sure it's going to stay that way. Uh, you know, I think that it goes like this, so similar to what John is saying, to respond to an immediate, without looking, this may not, this, this is not going to stay the way it is. It will eventually come back in, it may not look like it, but, um, eventually MTA will, you know, decide that Bethel should have some cars, some trains.
You know, I, I'm sorry.
No, so that's it.
I, I go over to the Bishop Curtis Homes twice a week now, and let me tell you, the Bethel, uh, train station parking lot that was so empty is no longer, no longer empty.
Wait a minute, Matt, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, but you're losing the point of TOD. The TOD is to keep the parking lot empty, and to live a quarter mile from the parking lot and walk to the train.
But, but what, but I think what I'm saying is, is that it's the need to. Let's, can we, uh, to not throw out the baby with.
I can make one more question.
No, she has a good point, and I just quickly, the point she's making is, the need for people to be near the train station is wrong. That's what she's talking about.
If I could make one request to the board, that if you're going to consider changes to the TOD, that you call the people that helped you write it, somebody like Robert Orr.
I've already been in touch with them.
Bring him in, and ask him the questions you're asking, because as John pointed out, you could just get a whole bunch of people who, who want changes to it, or, for whatever reason, they want changes to it, and all the people that don't want changes to it.
No, Peter, we, we, that, that's not what, that's not what we're.
But, but so, but so ask for some professional help.
Well, absolutely.
Of, of that regard, to tell you why these, the transition parking lots are full, and what you can do to bring people to live closer to them, so that doesn't happen as much.
If you want to.
That's my request.
Thank you, Peter.
Can I?
Bob.
I think, Bob.
Okay, I brought a couple of things away from TOD when we, we did the plan, one was, we wanted to save the look of downtown.
Yeah.
So we didn't wanna be tearing whole blocks, like people did in other renewal projects, uh, you know, across the state. You know, tear down a whole block of buildings, just to get rid of them, so we could build up bigger. And that wasn't the intent of TOD, the intended TOD was to fit things in where they did, or where they fit, so that we had more people living downtown, which was gonna protect the people who were trying to do business downtown, you know, the restaurants, the, the pharmacies, the, you know, the hardware stores, the little, little guy. And that was one of the key intents of saving the town, and saving what we have in this town, i- 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 it's gonna be putting these. And I, I gotta agree with Peter, you know, you, we, the whole intent of, that I brought out of TOD was to make it a little easier for people to invest in the town, like I said tonight. I'm, I'm heartfelt to see an, an individual fixing an old building up in town and making it work, and making it work to the point where he wants to expand it. And that was the intent of TOD, was make people want to invest in the town. And if you invest in the town, the town lives and grows. You can't have something living and growing by cutting it down all the time, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, so, uh, if you wanna go back and, um, schedule a public hearing for January, I have a date, if that's.
We have a.
Or I kinda got that impression.
Right.
You have two meetings scheduled for January.
Yes, we do, we have January tenth.
You want to do tenth, or you wanna give us till the second meeting?
It's up to you.
I, I would suggest we do the second meeting.
January, okay, wait.
So January what?
January twenty-fourth.
Okay, so.
We're in a new hearing.
Okay, so I amend my motion.
January twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty, twenty-three.
Did you make?
Twenty-four, yeah, twenty twenty-three.
Oh, twenty-three?
Yes.
January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, was the second go along with that?
Yes.
Thank you.
All in favor? All right, thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
With that, ladies and gentlemen, I'll make a motion that we close the meeting to the seat.
Second.
All in favor? Good night, okay, thank you for coming.
Good night, everybody.
Hey, John. Good night. Can you shut this down, hey, Glenn? Bob, what did you say? What's up, bro? Stop recording, David.